I'd like to call us meeting in Newberry Township Supervisors together. Please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I want to announce that the Board of Supervisors had executive sessions on February the 27th, March the 4th, March the 7th, March the 13th. They were all related to personnel issues. We had an executive session prior to this meeting, which dealt with personnel issues. So now, we're going to move on to public comment. All public comments shall be delivered from the podium by registered individuals, residents, or taxpayer. The time allowed for an agenda item is five minutes; otherwise, it's three minutes for a non-agenda matter. And I guess we'll start with the first one, Matthew Costello. Not here tonight? Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Bob Gaswin?
Bob?
Here. Here representing, as most of you know, the Redland Senior Center. I'd like to express on behalf of the Board of Directors your continued support to our center. As you know, that we are in a state of transition, but things are going well. And I might add that hopefully next month, when I come back here, that I will have for you the best news of the Senior Center in its 50 years.
Oh.
So don't miss it. Like to have everybody here. Saturday's our first chicken barbecue. That's a big moneymaker for us. And we are also looking and are in need of an outside storage area. So I'm going to say probably a 12 by 20. So if anyone has any ideas, give the center a call, give me a call. But we will definitely need an outside storage area.
What is that for?
What are you going to?
Well, we store, quite honestly, a lot of our paper products in there that we use in the center on a daily basis, and then also for our barbecues. Seasonal things.
So you said outside, though, so an inside area outside your building is what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, we need a roof over it. Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay. See you next month, hopefully.
Thank you, Bob.
If you see me after the meeting or reach out to me, I might be able to help you out with something for that. We can discuss what your needs are.
You're right around the corner from me.
Okay.
I can stop, you know. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, Brian Raybey.
Brian Raybey, 928 Pleasant Drive. Last meeting, it was brought to my attention, as well as many other members of the community, that we're no longer allowed to ask questions after these public comments. I would request the board relook at that, because a lot of this stuff that comes up later on in the meeting, we have never heard anything about. And it's simple questions. And I understand sometimes it's, like, just for instance, a sewer gets beat down, and beat down, and beat down. We don't need to hash the same thing over and over again. But some of these items, we've never heard about, and it's just simple questions or clarifications we're looking for at that time. So I would like to ask the board to reconsider what they've done and allow us to have some comments or brief discussions on it before you guys actually vote. Thank you.
Connie Flasher?
I have several items. I have a few for the agenda items as well, but I'll do the non-agendas at the moment. First of all, I called Friday, asked my name to be on the agenda. Dave was in the office and said that he couldn't do it. I noticed tonight, there's names that were already put on there before Myron, and I had asked her to send me what she had in reference to the 30-days extension that she requested that I give her to file my right to know. I'm a little concerned about this constantly trying to push all of us in the corner and the transparency that you're trying to keep away from the public, and I'm starting to get really annoyed with that. My next opinion is the manager. How could you appoint a manager who can't be bonded? It states that in the second-class township, it's also a part of his contract that he needed to be bonded. Well, obviously, he's not here tonight. He's not bonded. He can't perform the functions of a manager. Did you indeed do your due diligence in looking at the candidates, interviewing the candidates, doing background checks, doing drug screenings, and all the things that you need to do to hire a manager? Well, it certainly doesn't appear that you have. The third thing is the zoning officer. Nobody was aware that you were appointing another zoning officer. That was never an advertised position. Why do we need two officers? We already had one. So now, we appoint another one. It's on the agenda with the contract or with a resolution. So we're going to pay for two zoning officers, and what's the point of that? If the current one was not doing his job, then there are remediations to that. You don't just turn around and hire another firm at $100 or $125 an hour to take the place of the one that you already have on staff and pay for two of them. Again, I asked, did you check previous employers? The manager was with one municipality, which I'm very aware of, for five years, and the other one for three. How extensive is his manager, was his, or is his managerial experience? And he should have known that he needed to be bonded. If he couldn't have been bonded, then he shouldn't have applied for the job. The other thing is the HR influence that you use to hire him. They're an arm of a law firm, McKee's, Wallace, and Nurick. They actually own that company. So I hope that they don't do work in the township as well, because that could be a conflict of interest if we're using them to hire managers who aren't qualified for the job. Not quite sure why the right to know is taking a lot longer, because there were things...
We have seven minutes, just letting you know.
How many?
Seven.
Seven? I'm at seven?
No, I'm sorry.
Now that you've taken up two?
Go ahead. You've got 10 seconds. Thank you.
All right. Well, now that you've messed me up here. The new administrative vehicle, it's been seen around the township this week, doing things, checking hydrants and whatever. Was that something that we had, or was that just purchased?
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Well, if it was just purchased, was it in the budget and discussed? Because I'd like to know the cost of that. That'll be on my next right to know.
Can we answer that question to her? That's just a car they used, right?
Yeah. That's a township car. It's been in the township for...
The equipment I'm talking about.
The equipments.
Rudy's, Bill's.
That belongs to the...
The township engineering equipment?
Yes. They just used their car.
$10,000 expended during the ask about.
Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony Miller, 115 St. Andrews Way. I have a public comment for three minutes, and then I have a couple of agenda items I want to talk about. First off, without talking my own, if Connie was talking about agenda item with the code, you should have been given five minutes, not three. So I kind of resonate with Brian's point of view that it's frustrating that you've changed all of a sudden since January, that we cannot speak and give public comment on an agenda item when it's being voted on in motion, especially since it's laid out that way in the public participation policy. And so, a good example is tonight, I'm going to spend time asking about the collective bargaining agreement, but instead, you could just be explaining it under the agenda item, and I could save myself and you a lot of time of redundancy, and just maybe take the questions I have that you didn't answer at that time. So the other part of my public comment is, I sent an email last week to Mr. Abadalo asking for an in-person meeting. I received a response from the Supervisor Schwartz, and he said he was on leave, and the Supervisor Schwartz was covering it in his absence to ensure emails don't go unanswered. He stated he didn't have a definite timeline for when he would return, and couldn't guarantee he'd be here before the next meeting. So what type of leave is he on?
Paid administrative leave.
Okay. How long's he been on leave?
Three weeks, about three weeks? Is that right?
I can't hear you. So if he's on paid leave, he has a laptop, that he has VPN access to do his emails, and actually work as if he's working on his... I had that, he has that. So why is the supervisor answering his email? If he's being paid? I thought so. Okay. Thank you. That's all my public comment. So the first agenda item, I'm trying not to be too redundant about Ms. Flasher talking about the zoning officer, but I understand that Mr. Kenny was engaged sometime early in February, from the best I can tell, as a zoning officer. I'm pleased that you're finally following due process to officially appoint him, which is required by our code and by law. I haven't seen anything about how much he's getting paid. She threw a number out, but what is he getting paid per hour? You don't know?
I don't know the exact dollar. It's around $105. He's not getting paid, Penoni is.
He's getting paid $105 an hour?
Not him. Not him. The firm he works for is.
He works for Penoni, right? So you're paying Penoni $105 an hour for every hour he works, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, all right. So why was the decision never discussed or approved in an open meeting prior to tonight? I mean, this is specifically, you're engaging with a third-party contractor, Penoni. Our engagement agreement with Penoni is for engineering services. Zoning officer responsibilities are not engineering services. And even though we have an engagement agreement with Penoni for engineering services, you still correctly vote, as you did in the last meeting, for services outside of that agreement in open meetings, such as traffic studies, when you ask Bill to do a traffic study or whatever. I just think this is just another representation of lack of transparency of this board since January. So I applaud you for finally doing due process. Second agenda item is the fee schedule. This is a quick one. I looked at the fee schedule that was posted on the website. Why are we going back to the fee schedule of 2022 or 2023? We had Bill do extensive search and research on local municipalities, of what they had fees, and we raised them. It was an unanimous vote in 2024. The fee schedule that's now on the website, and the one that's posted with the resolution, is going back a couple of years. It's old.
So that was erroneously posted, so we're going to table that tonight till we can repost it correctly?
Okay. All right. So, I mean, that was my point. I was like, I didn't understand it at all. All right. So if you would permit me to speak while you talk about the collective bargaining agreement, I won't go on and ask probably my little questions I have about it, but if you insist, I'll do it now.
Do it now. This is your chance for public comment.
Okay. Okay. So Friday, I sent a, just so everybody knows, I sent an email to the board requesting them to post it, because it wasn't posted, so that the public could review it, and I didn't even receive a response from any of you. And please don't take this, Officer Bloom or anyone, because I question and ask what's in it, it doesn't mean that I don't like the police, okay? So since the proposed contract wasn't posted, I'm going to have to ask some questions, and just from what I knew, what the negotiations that were going on last year when I was still here. So what are the salary increases for the patrolmen, and what's the length of the contract?
Is it okay to answer these questions?
Is the agreement getting approved tonight?
Yeah. The proposed increases are 4% a year.
And how many years?
It's a five-year contract.
So we were negotiating all along for four years, and now you added a year?
Yes.
What's the benefit to the township to do a five-year contract?
It just extends, it just avoids us, gives us another year of not negotiating a contract, and locks us in.
Hold the timer, please.
All right, so I can't address that.
Okay. So the police were asking in a negotiation last year for sergeant pay to be increased 10% over patrolmen's wages. Is that...
We can't answer anything that involves the negotiation.
So you're going to vote on it tonight?
Mr. Miller, I believe that you're talking about things that were negotiated while you were manager of the township, correct? Behind closed doors with collective bargaining? They were not negotiated in public? Is that correct?
Yes.
I guess you could say that.
Well, I'm not, you don't have to guess. You did. So are you talking about things that were done in your professional capacity as manager?
I would have to say yes.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
So you're not going to tell us? That's what you're going to... Thank you. See, did I cover them all? Yes. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jane Harmon?
Jane Harmon, 205 Hemlock Lane. Okay, first of all, I was looking at the reports, and I seen no manager's report, so I'm safe to say there is not one that I missed or did not get posted.
That's correct.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay. Two. I believe that public comment should be re-permitted in accordance with the guidelines outlined in Section G regarding public comment, especially when an agenda item is being discussed. Typically, this occurs after a motion has been made, but I understand that the decision, the discussion period is open at the discretion of the board before any motion is voted on. We used to do it this way. It seems that there might be a shift in the practice, which raises concerns that residents might be discouraged from asking questions or providing input on agenda items prior to a vote. It is essential for residents to have the opportunity to contribute their perspectives during these discussions, as it can offer valuable insights that may not always be available to the board. This brings us back to the importance of transparency in our communications. I hope that we can foster an environment that encourages open dialogue and collaboration among all stakeholders. Thank you for consideration. Under G, I wanted to read this to you. Citizens may also address topics appearing on the agenda during the portion of the meeting at which the agenda topic is discussed by the board, at the invitation of the board. The discussion period for an agenda topic generally follows a motion prior to a vote on said motion. If the topic is not a motion, then the discussion period is open at the board's discretion. So this is what's on your policy for public meeting. I just wanted to read that to you, since we changed it, and it seems like I'm not the only one, but several other people have an issue with that. So. Then three. Under new business, I see the CBA police. I want to start by questioning why it's abbreviated as CBA instead of using the full term, collective bargaining agreement, for the police. I believe this is an issue of transparency, as many residents may not know what CBA means, which I've had several reach out to me and ask me on my election page. I am looking at the agenda for the new business and trying to find the relevant documents on the webpage, but no CBA agreement or contract is available. If this item is going to be voted on tonight, residents should be accessed to the document and be able to ask questions. I had a right to know for the last one, and I have that information, so I like to compare apple to apples. Anyhow, we haven't yet balanced the budget with the recent tax increase, and we're now faced with a deficit. I would appreciate more insight into the situation before we make any comments. Is there a plan to proceed without public input? This would not be in the best interest of the community. If this increase is necessary, it could have significant implications for residents and the future budget. Could you clarify how many years this contract encompasses? But you already did. This is my notes prior, so I can't change it. I have several questions regarding this matter. Was the entire board on board with this being voted on tonight?
Your time is up.
Okay. Last question, last sentence. As we look forward ahead to 2025, what is the projected total increase and will affect funding for police protection? Additionally, has anyone consulted with Jane to analyze the cost over the next several years and determine how much tax mileage may need to increase to accommodate this? Again, the word of the night is transparency.
So, Scott? Just for the record, the policy we are enforcing, the meeting policy, has been in effect. We're just enforcing it now. It's at our discretion. It's at our discretion to allow comment during...
Streaming went down?
Streaming went down.
Try and reset it. You can go ahead and finish if you want.
So it's at our discretion, and I was...
Is it recording?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, it's streaming again for right now, so...
Okay.
Mike, I believe it's McCleary?
Nothing to say.
Okay. Tom Adams?
Tom Adams, 1610 Valley Road. I guess we have to learn to speak faster here. Couple of questions. The development with the greenhouses on Pine's Road, is that going forward, is that on hold?
Gone away.
It's gone away?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great. That's good to know. The development on Church Road, has that been appealed?
We haven't heard back from them.
You have not heard back from them?
Yes, they have appealed.
That's appealed, yeah.
They have appealed it.
Yes.
Wrong problem.
So we will hear about it sometime in another meeting. I take it.
Yeah, I think it'll be relatively soon we'll hear about it.
Very good. There was a property sold recently down on Pine's Road, right along Fishing Creek, the Plow, I think it's the Plowman property. Is that in the Newberry Township, or is that in Goldsboro?
That's Newberry.
That is Newberry Township. And you know how extensive that property is?
10 acres?
Forty-seven.
Oh.
Forty-seven?
Forty-seven acres. Oh, wow. More than that.
Oh, wow.
Oh, part of it's in the borough. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it looks like, I believe it's Jim Hoffman?
We're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think the next one is Justin from Integrated? You're on... Carol Norbeck?
Nothing to say at this time.
Roger Brunner?
Roger Brunner, 701 Castle Road, Lot 124. Recently, all the residents at the Mobile Home Park where I live got this letter in the mail stating that we're going to be paying $50 per month for a sewer bill. And I found out that they pay $149 a quarter for the sewer bill. So I talked to some of the residents about this, and they're pretty upset about it. One woman I talked to told me her son's an attorney, and she brought the subject up with her attorney, and he asked her if we had a new contract, because in our old contract, it doesn't state a sewer bill. So anyway, I called State Attorney General's Office, Consumer Protection. I filed a complaint about this, and I talked to them on the phone about two weeks ago. And that woman on the phone asked me the same thing. Do you have a new contract? I said, no. She said, that's illegal. She said, you need to have a contract stating that you're going to be paying a sewer bill. I said, okay, and they're looking into it and everything. She said, that sounds like a ripoff. So I'm asking you, the board here, if you can look into this and put a stop to this until, because this puts the start April the 1st. We don't think it's fair.
Does that trail park have its own sewer, or they hooked up their sewer?
Huh? Do they have their own sewer plant?
Hooked up to ours?
Brent, do you know which one this is?
Because there are customers of ours, the Mobile Home Parks are a customer of ours, and they charge their, Mobile Home Park owner pays us, and he charges that money.
Yeah, they pay you so much.
Yeah, but...
But don't they have to go to the PUC to get that raised?
Well, I don't think they did. We all got these letters in the mail, and people were going, well, what's this all about? So like I said, I filed a complaint with the State Attorney General's Office, and they're looking into it.
I would call the PUC, too.
I did. They're the ones that told me to call the State Attorney General's Office. I called them first. And if you can look into it and put a stop to this, I'd appreciate it. You know, if you can do something about it.
It's unfortunate that's under your park management and park ownership.
I tried calling her and talking to her about it, and she won't call me back. Loretta, I'll tell you what, real quick here, there's a lot of things around there that need to be done, and they don't do nothing around there. They come around, paint your light pole, and fix your light up and the light, and that's about it. Period.
Which trail park is this again?
Mobile, it's a Newberry Farm Community, 701 Castle Road. Real quick here, right behind where I live, I live in a cul-de-sac.
Twenty seconds, sir.
Okay, there's a bank right there. It's all filled with dry, dead trees and everything. If we have a fire around there, that's going to come up over the hill and burn our houses down. I tried talking to her about that several times. Nothing. It's a safety hazard.
We'll send our codes guy down, but unfortunately, because it's within the trailer court...
It's a private property.
It's considered private property.
I understand that, but real quick here, when we have these storms, like the other night, them dead trees are flowing back and forth, they're going to hit our house sometime. And she won't do a damn thing about it. Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to guess that Sarah Tonguey, maybe?
Tonguey.
Tonguey? Okay, well, for a guess, I think I did pretty well.
You did. You did. You did very well. It's a very unusual last name. So, hi, I'm Sarah Tonguey. I live at 275 Iroquois Trail, down in the very small part of Newberry Township considered Cly. I am here to initially speak about an agenda item being the Dolan Memorial Park that's supposed to be upgraded. I'm strictly here just to speak about my full support and our excitement as a community. I am the president of our HOA board, and I think it's pretty exciting for everybody in our community that that is going to happen.
So while we're on that point, real quick, there's some papers over there for you to sign.
Okay.
It's a support letter that needs to be mailed to...
I have to send it up tomorrow morning.
Okay, perfect. I did see that there were letters of support, and had I known that you were collecting letters of support, I probably would have had my community do so. But I will certainly sign that on my way out.
Thank you.
On that, though, we have a ton of children in our neighborhood, and we obviously like our neighborhood backs to that park, just so that we can place ourselves here. There is no, like, non-driving access to that park, so if we want to compare that to the Lee Fischel Park in Goldsboro, that park is always highly populated because kids can access it. I'm asking the township to just maybe take that into consideration, to see if there's any possible way we can make walking access. I think it would just build a better community. It's safer for our children. We don't want anybody walking on Cly Road specifically. So, you know, as an HOA, we have really looked at how can we make an access point from our side of things. Just unfortunately, to get a homeowner on board with that is near impossible, and understandably so. It's too high of a liability for them. Again, if the township could take a look into seeing if we can put a sidewalk in, if we can extend it down from Goldsboro, I know that that, I don't know anything about the zoning, so that's not my job to figure out. That's why we vote for you. And that's pretty much my comment on that.
And you're about to meet our Parks and Recs board. They're here tonight, so I can introduce them.
Perfect.
So they're hearing you and listening, what you just said.
Awesome. I love that. This is my first meeting, so number one, like, thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. I do have a couple of comments, just based off of the other people's comments that I've heard this evening. So, with this being my first impression of the board, honestly, from me sitting here, it doesn't look great. Like, to see you guys accept questions and hear people's comments and then be whispering amongst yourselves behind the board, it sends a very bad message to us as taxpayers because yes, we do vote for you, we do obviously hope that you're hearing us and representing us appropriately, but at the end of the day, we vote for you.
Thanks.
So, I just want to make sure that we're being represented and heard fairly.
You can spend a second.
Really, that's, that's it. That's my time. I can be done at my 10-second mark, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, do you want to make, you have a motion to make?
Yeah. Are we done with everybody?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we move the supervisor comments, reports to next?
We can't do that, we can do your introductions.
Well, that's part of where it's under though.
Well, it can, all right.
Okay, so I am going to introduce, is everybody here? I'd like to introduce the Parks and Rec Commission Committee. If you'd come up front and say hi to everybody. Colton? Norm? Eric? Jane? Is, um...
Cody?
Cody, I mean, Cody, yeah, I'm sorry. Is Colton here?
No.
Okay. So, folks, this is our board for Parks and Recs. They come to us as already servant leaders in our community. They've been out there working on our behalf for many years. If you don't know these folks, Jane has been a big part of the community, you know, getting the voice out to the community. Eric Ritter is a coach and does a lot with the kids, your children. Norm has been a big part of the events committee, he is the one who really helped build this veterans memorial out front here. Without his help, that probably would not have happened. And lastly is Cody. Cody has been instrumental in getting things started with the events committee and now he's going to be heading and cheering on the Parks and Recs Committee. So, this is our board, we're excited that they're on board to help us move our parks forward. And now we need walkways, if you heard, guys. So, please, please welcome these guys, they're going to be doing a lot of work moving forward. We're proud to have you. Thanks for being servant leaders, greatly appreciated.
Okay, we're going to move on to land development and subdivision plan review. First one up is Wright, 320 to 350 Front Street Final Subdivision. Hi, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Supervisors. My name is Chris Hoover with Hoover Engineering, representing the Charles Wright Subdivision Plan. Mr. Wright is with me this evening. The plan that is before you, it's a five-lot subdivision. Mr. Wright owns two properties right at the border of Lewis Berry Borough and the township at 320 and 350 Front Street. The property that he lives in consists of about six acres. He bought an adjacent piece of property which consists of 26 acres, which is actually the property being subdivided. It's in your residential agricultural zone, which allows us to subdivide up to five lots of this particular property. As you can see, it's actually right at the boundary of the borough of Lewis Berry and Newberry. Penn Street, which is shown along the top of the plan, is the boundary line between the borough and the township. And then Front Street, which is along the left-hand side of the plan, is totally within the township. Mr. Wright lives on what is shown as Lot Number Six of the plan, which is kind of this lot in the lower left-hand corner. He's intending to subdivide two, three-and-a-half acre lots behind his house, which he intends to allow his children to build upon. The two-acre lot, which is located along Penn Street, which is kind of the top of the plan, that lot's being reserved for another future family member. The fourth lot is Lot Number One, which is the existing farmhouse that was on this property, that's going to be subdivided off and sold to the person who's currently renting it. And then the remaining part of the track, Lot Number Three, is a lot addition to Mr. Wright's home property, which will allow him then to enter the property into the Clean and Green Program. Probably the biggest issue relative to this plan that we discussed at the Planning Commission was in order to create lots, four and five, the three-and-a-half acre lots, I'm sorry, yeah, four and, three and five. But, long story short, four and five, can't read. We have to construct a private street in order to provide lot width for these lots. And what Mr. Wright is asking you to do, because there's only two lots that are going to be providing access to this street, is we're actually asking for some relief relative to the construction standards of private streets. The township ordinance requires that private streets be constructed to the same standards as public streets, as far as stone depth and macadam. But what we are asking to do, since we are only servicing these two lots, is we will improve the existing driveway that's there to a 16-foot width and construct a, a stone, a cul-de-sac turnaround within the turnaround area of the cul-de-sac. But we are requesting that we not have to pave it at this time, just because we're servicing two lots. There is a right-of-way agreement that has been prepared as part of the submission, it has been reviewed by your solicitor. There are a couple minor comments that we will incorporate into the plan and in the agreement based upon the review. But obviously, that agreement stipulates who's responsible for maintaining that roadway as well as methods to recoup costs and things like that. As far as public sewer, public water, the zoning ordinance does not require us to connect to public sewer because we're in the agricultural zone. However, the existing farm lot, Lot Number One, as well as Lot Number Two, will be connected to public sewer and Mr. Wright's existing home, Lot Number Six, is connected to public sewer as well. We did go to the authority and the authority has given us approval to connect Lot Number Two to the system. Lots Four and Five will be onsite sewage and primary and replacement testing has been done. That being said, the plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission, there's mostly administrative comments left, other than the waivers. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Chris, what would the addresses be for that?
It, there'll be, there'll be a front street address. I mean, the township obviously will have to assign those, but Wright's property, the house itself is at 350, so it'll be somewhere probably in the 340 range.
Would they have markers out front for the fire companies?
Yeah, we would have to have, just like any other street or something, have the address identifiers out front.
So, you should have my memo from March 14th, as was mentioned, there was four waivers, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the plan. Waivers one through four, they, the Planning Commission recommended unanimously, waivers five and six, it was a three-to-one vote. And as Chris mentioned, there was some discussion about the Planning Commission wanting lots Four and Five to be connected to public sewer, but as, as he noted, it is within the agricultural zone and over 1,000 feet from public sewer in this particular instance, for those two lots. And I think when you said authority, he was referring to Lewis Berry Borough Authority. These are, there would be connections to Lewis Berry Borough.
Correct, as I understand, and Brent can verify, that the users of Newberry Township are actually kind of considered Lewis Berry Borough residents as far as billing and things like that relative to the sewer.
Any more questions?
Chris, you do have it figured out for the, for the future, say Charlie's kids leave and they have everything figured out, that we don't have a dispute with right-of-way for that driveway?
Right.
It's all figured out?
Right, it's a written legal agreement that binds the owners and heirs of the property, so anybody who would take ownership in the future are still bound by that same legal agreement. There's also clearly a statement within that document that states that those property owners can't petition the township or ask the township to take it over as a public street until such time it would be improved to those standards. And those standards could change between now and whenever they would make that request.
Anybody else?
I don't have any questions. I was at the Planning Commission for all these already, so I'm up to speed on most of them already.
So, I'm looking for a motion, do you want to do all the waivers at once or you want to do them separate?
That's up to you, Mr. Chair.
I'm asking the rest of the board how they feel.
The Planning Commission recommended approval on all of them, so I don't see a problem doing them all at once.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the waivers.
I'll make the motion, we approve the waivers one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Bill, any comments or questions on that?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, all in favor of approving the waivers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm looking for a, a motion to approve the 320 and 350 Front Street Final Subdivision
I'll make that motion, we approve the final subdivision plan for 320 and 350 Front Street.
And that would be conditioned on the...
On the engineer's notes and other outstanding comments.
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Chris.
Next, we have, uh, Ream 210 River Road? You know, I think we did. All right, thanks. We'll do that.
Thank you.
It's not on my cheat sheet, Dave. Okay, real quick, before we get to that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll make that motion, we approved last month's meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, you're up.
Yes, good evening, my name is Scott Akins with Akins Engineering, here to represent the plan this evening. Mr. Ream is the owner of both parcels involved in this subdivision. The, excuse me, the property is at the southern intersection, corner of the intersection of River Road and Cly Road. Lot One is 31.6 acres and Lot Two is about an acre and a quarter. Mr. Ream wants to subdivide the main parcel into two lots, a lot that's 10 acres and a lot that's 20 acres, and then the remaining acreage add on to his existing 1.25 acre lot. It's pretty much that simple, there's no development proposed at this time. The lots are for his sons to do future development at some point in time, but there's nothing proposed in the near future. The plan has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, they get a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. There were two additional waiver requests since the Planning Commission reviewed the plan. The waiver requests are for plan scale, excuse me, the site context map and the woodland evaluation. And the woodland evaluation and site context map were primarily because there are no development proposed here and site plan scale was just to kind of show the property all on one sheet.
Bill? I'm sorry, Bill?
Yes, you should have my memo from March 17th, as you mentioned, there are three waivers. The first waiver there, the Planning Commission did recommend granting the waiver, the second two were discussed, but there was no recommendation made because they weren't, they weren't on the agenda that night. And then there's administrative items remaining as well.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the waivers requested.
I'll make a motion, we approve waivers one, two, and three.
Second?
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to approve a minor subdivision plan for the Ream property at 210 River Road.
I'll make that motion.
On the engineer?
On the engineer?
On the engineer's comment.
On the engineer's comments. Excuse me, Bill. Subject to comment, yeah.
There you go. All right. Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're all done? You're good?
I'm up next.
Oh, you're up next too? Okay, well then I'll, give me a second to get my paper together. Okay, you want to go ahead and go again?
Okay, so, almost carbon copy, Mr. Stanley owns existing Lot One and existing Lot Two. Existing Lot One is a 76-acre parcel that includes the Mobile Home Park off of Ridge Road. Existing Lot Two is the .75-acre parcel down in the corner on Old Quaker Road. Mr. Stanley intends to subdivide off nine and a quarter acres of the 76-acre parcel, add it to the .75-acre parcel to make that slightly over 10 acres to facilitate the sale of that lot and have it be qualified for Clean and Green. Same three waiver requests are asked for this plan. Again, has received Planning Commission recommendation for both the plan and all three waivers in this case. I think there's one comment left over besides the administrative comments with regards to showing the water line, which we will certainly do before we get the plan signed for recording.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve these waivers?
Bill, do you have anything to add?
No, as mentioned, all the Planning Commission took action on all these and recommended unanimously that they be approved.
James, questions? James, are we okay since we advertised it differently on Agenda Friday? Is it, are we okay with that?
Yeah, it was a clerical, it was a clerical error on the listing of the address of the property. So, yes, it would need to be, you need to update the agenda, open it up for public comment, put the, advertise, advertise the, not advertise, publish the revised agenda for 24 hours and that cures the issue, but it was a clerical error.
Okay, we do that already?
Where are we? Make a motion?
Make a motion to...
Has my agenda is Pots Hill Road?
Yeah, that was the error. It's not, it's not...
That's the clerical error.
Yeah, it's not Pots Hill Road.
Okay, when was that changed? Sunday, Friday, Wednesday? For the motion today? With Pots Hill? Yeah. Yeah. Question? When was that changed?
So, we need to, it was, it was advertised with the wrong, it was supposed to be Ridge Road.
And we can change it back. Isn't that what James just said?
So, I'll make a motion, we update, update the agenda to change the address to 300 Ridge Road.
We have 24 hours to correct that, is what our attorney just mentioned.
How do you vote? You have 24 hours? You have 24 hours? Okay. I didn't know how that's set up.
No, it's 24 hours before.
If it's a clerical issue on the agenda, the supervisors can amend the agenda. It's not an action, it's a clerical error. What they have to do to, to correct the error is publish the agenda immediately after the meeting and let it sit there for 24 hours. They can still take action on the item, it's just a clerical error. All right? That's per the Sunshine Act.
Yeah, we seen the clerical error earlier, but it would be illegal for us to change it on the website and say, yep, we, it was just a quick mistake. So we got to go through this process.
But someone did because the one I got over here says Ridge Road.
It was just a printout.
Okay.
But the one we officially uploaded to the website made public. We had to leave that the way it is. We'll make the correction after this meeting and then the updated one will be on the website.
Aaron, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
All right, need a motion to update the agenda.
I'll make a motion. We update the agenda to change the address from 300 Pots Hill Road to 300 Ridge Road.
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
No, no, no. Open it up for public comment, please.
Okay, public comment on that? Clerical error? All in favor signify by saying aye and changing the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to approve the waivers on Stanley property. All three waivers?
I'll make the motion to approve the three waivers.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to approve the minor final subdivision plan for the William Stanley property at?
I'll make a motion. We approve the William Stanley 300 Ridge Road subdivision plan. A contingent on the engineer's notes.
There you go. Second?
I'll second it.
Questions, concerns? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you all very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Is that all you had?
That's all I have.
That's all you got? Okay. Next up is the Monarch Office Expansion.
Good evening. Joshua George with Land Works Civil Design, representing Monarch Products. I'm joined this evening by Krista Wagman from Monarch Products. Krista's sitting back there, in case you have any questions for her. I'm sure you're familiar with Monarch Products. They're at 385 Syke Road. They've been there since 1986. So we have before you tonight a land development plan with three additions to the existing building. The first addition is right on the front, near where you go in for the office. It's 200 square feet. The second addition is on the north side of that office space. It's about 830 square feet. And the third addition is on the back, on the, what would be kind of the west side of the building. That is about 10,000 square feet. That is for storage purposes, storage of existing materials, rebar, cement, things like that. All of the additions are within the existing property. They're connected to the existing building. The property is served by public water. It is also served by on-lot septic. The septic system was inspected by the township SEO, found to be in good condition and satisfactory to support these additions. There will probably only be a few additional employees added to the project as part of the expansion, probably two or three office staff is what's anticipated, not immediately, but over the course of the next couple of years as staff is added on. We have added a few additional parking spaces to accommodate the, not primarily the existing staff, but also the future staff. Those are there on the east side, kind of in front of the building. And we are proposing a small stormwater management facility on the, on the lower-left corner of the drawing in that lower-left box. That is actually required because we are disturbing existing impervious area. The ordinance requires 20% of that to be accounted for as part of stormwater management controls. The plan was reviewed and recommended for approval by the township planning commission. There are four waivers associated with the plan. Those were all also recommended unanimously by the planning commission. So I ask for your approval of the plan this evening.
Bill?
I have nothing further to add to what he?
Okay, at this time I need to inform everybody, the streaming has stopped. However, we're still recording and it will be available, I hope, tomorrow, the next day through the township office. It's, the camera for some reason won't let us stream again. Sorry for that interruption. Okay, you're looking for?
There's four waivers.
Four waivers? All right. Looking for a motion for those four waivers?
I'll make a motion to approve the four waivers.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Questions or concerns? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now I'm looking for the preliminary and final land development plan for Monarch's office expansion.
I'll make that motion, subject to the engineer's comments.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Comments or concerns? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks for your time this evening. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Falken, Falken preliminary and final subdivision land development plan. I'm going to ask you to step away so that you can't be accused of being involved.
I'm going to recuse myself from anything dealing with this plan since I'm a direct principal.
Okay, good evening. I'm Andrew Barsinger from Site Design Concepts, representing Falkens LLC. The subdivision plan we have here is subdivision and a land development plan. As you can see from the image on the screen, there are two parcels located at 1615 and 1645 Old Trail currently. Those two parcels are going to be split into six lots. So we have an existing mixed use where lot four is going to be located right in the middle. There's an existing residential use where lot six is going to be located. Yes. And lot one, two, three, and five will all be proposed commercial uses for future development. Now, lot four and six, like I said, those two uses are going to be, they're going to continue as non-conformities, existing non-conformities. And then with this plan, there is a land development side of that with lot two. So a few sheets back, we do have development for lot two. It's a proposed office building and parking lot. The parking area will be for the office building there on the left, but then also there's a shared space on the right-hand side for the, that's a vet building, right? To the, to the right of that. Stormwater basin underground there. You see the piping, the inlets. In this location, there is not public water and public sewer available. So we had to go, month, month ago, we had a board meeting, the conditional use hearing for, the conditional use for on-lot systems. So you can see all of the lots have been tested. We have run through the soils testing. We're going through a planning module for, through DEP right now for that. And we had hydrogeologic studies performed to make sure that the lot sizes all conformed and they all do. We have four waivers. And I believe that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll just touch on the waivers. It was, waivers one, two, and four were recommended by the planning commission. Waiver number three was recommended to be denied and instead, this was for side and curb, sidewalk and curb, and the planning commission made a recommendation that on a deferment, four to zero, that the sidewalk and curb be deferred until that time that the board would require or the township would require that the curb and sidewalk go in.
Dave?
Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve one, two, and four, and also follow the recommendation of the planning commission by deferring the sidewalks.
So if I could interrupt here?
Yes.
I would make the, do them separately.
Okay.
Because if I'm, if I'm hearing what the planning commission did, they want to put a note on the plan?
Yeah, it's a note.
So, so I would do that separately.
Okay. All right.
Dave, I make a motion for waiver one, submission of the preliminary plan.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You want, did you want to do all but the sidewalk or do you?
One by one.
One by one? Okay. All right. It's been moved to second for waiver number one. Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Need a motion for waiver number two?
I'll make a motion to provide a site context map approval.
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Waiver number three, sidewalk and curb requirement, looking for a motion on a deferment?
James, do we have to deny it and then make a note on this one or? Because it's asking approval and we're not approving it per se.
So you can modify or put a condition on the waiver that a note be put in place?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalking requirements on the condition for deferment to a later date.
To add a, to adding the note, six-month note to the plan?
Well, I believe that should be on there now, I believe. On the title sheet, I think we did add that on there.
You've already addressed it.
I'm pretty sure we added that to the title.
So, so just, let's make it official.
Okay.
All right. You got it all straight now?
I don't think so.
I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments?
Who pays for it in the future?
Property owner.
The one that owns it at the time?
Yeah.
So it'd be written up in the contract when they buy the property?
Well, it's part of the deed, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's, the note that they're asking for is for the deed.
So it, it's part of a recorded plan and whenever action is taken?
The landowner has to be?
Is subject to that note and you're subject to the zoning laws, you're subject to whatever enforcement action is in place.
Anybody else? Look, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on waiver number four.
I'll make a motion for the waiver to provide a woodlands evaluation.
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to approve the preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan for Falkens LLC.
I'll make that motion, subject to the engineer's comments.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. All right, Newberry Holdings is up next.
Good evening. Justin Kuhn, Integrated Consulting. We actually have in front of you tonight a stormwater plan. So I don't believe we're looking for official action on the plan as it's not a land development plan, but it has waivers associated with this site. It's at the, at the southwest corner of Pots Hill there. Right now, we're just proposing a grading operation on the site to clean it up for future use someday. So at this time, there's no proposed use on the site. It's a grading plan, installation of stormwater, then at some point it would have to come back before you for land development.
Is there an address associated with that?
I don't know if there'd be an actual specific address because it's not been developed.
Okay.
So I don't think there'd be an address associated with it, not a mailing address.
You need to know where it is, I was asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, where it is.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the southwest corner of Old Trail and Pots Hill Road.
Old Trail and Pots Hill?
This is the, right here's the PennDOT shed.
It's right across the street from the PennDOT shed.
Okay, gotcha.
Is that, are you following where it's at?
Mm-hmm.
It's mainly a wooded slope lot today. There's a little gravel area on outside of that. It's completely undeveloped. So we're proposing a grading operation there, stormwater plan. But we're in front of you tonight for actual waivers. So we have six waivers that deal with slopes, traffic radii and so forth. The planning commission had approved waivers one through five. Waiver six actually wasn't submitted in time to be on the agenda, so they had not acted on waiver number six.
Yeah, so waiver one was a three to one vote. Waiver two was a three to one vote recommending approval. And waivers three, four, five, and six were all, or no, I'm sorry, three, four, and five were all voted on unanimously. And as you mentioned, six was not on the agenda. I, I don't take any issue with any of the waivers, even with regards to the, the stormwater design there for the 25-year design storm. That's something that the applicant is going to work out with PennDOT. It is a pipe that discharges directly to the PennDOT right-of-way, so it'll be addressed kind of during the PennDOT permit. So if that pipe ends up being increased in size, I would think they would, the applicant at that time would increase the pipe sizes on site as well, if that ends up being the case, so.
Will this fix the issue with the water on Old Trail Road where the mud comes off that hill?
I'm not familiar with the issue you were talking about.
No, that's next door.
Okay, I'm confused.
Well, most, this is before.
This thing's old place?
No, it's beside things.
Before you get to things.
Oh, before you get to things?
Yes.
I mean, I would guess it's going to help because that water currently is getting to things old property, so it's, it's definitely going to make it better.
Okay, so that's not the place that we dug up? Okay.
No, it's to the right of that, yeah.
Yeah, if you look up in there now, you can see where they logged part of it.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean now?
Quite a signary logged that, too.
Yeah, yep.
So we're just looking for action on the waivers, as you mentioned, tonight.
Okay, do we want to do these waivers one by one or how do you want to do these waivers?
Well, we have one here that wasn't in front of the board, so number six was not. But we can do the other ones.
I think we can do them all. I mean, six, they just weren't over.
I'm looking for the motion to do that.
I'll make a motion. We re-approve the waiver request one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor of the Newberry Holdings LLC stormwater permit signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What do you want me to do here?
Good helps hard to get. I'm proof. Hey, Dave?
There was one here, Dave.
That was the next thing on the agenda, was to approve the minutes. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to start over with the reports. We're going to start with public safety.
Good evening. I want to start with the police report. For the month of February, the department handled 998 calls. There was one aggravated assault, two burglaries, 16 thefts, one motor vehicle theft, seven drug offenses, five DUIs, five simple assaults, two harassment, and four teen all other offenses. They also investigated 945 other calls for service, including 11 domestic, 19 traffic accidents. They issued 75 traffic citations, 131 warnings for non-traffics, and made 24 misdemeanor and/or felony criminal arrests. That's all I have for the police report, other than saying that. That's all I have for the police report, other than saying that I urge the residents that, to lock your vehicles. It's getting warmer weather out there. People were out walking around, and we've had some issues in the past where individuals are walking through developments or whatever, and they're getting unlocked vehicles and, and taking change, you know, remotes. Whatever's in your vehicle, sometimes they, they decide that they're going to take it. So, I just urge that you lock your vehicles. A lot of times, that's what prohibits it, keeps people from getting in your vehicles. So, if you could do that, that would be great. Onto the public safety report. I'd like to indicate that York Haven Borough Fire Department has a chicken barbecue coming up in July. And Goldsboro has Bingo on April 5th and 19th. They have their fishing derby, which is very big to this area, on April 6th. So, if you're around that area of Valley Road and Pines Road on April 6th, just know there's going to be a lot of vehicles there at that intersection. And their big event for the year, which is called Coach Bingo, it's where they give out coach purses, is on April 7th. The last thing that I'd like to speak about is the paid driver program. If Lieutenant Diddy can come up here? And he will speak about the paid, part-time fire driver program that is going in effect. The chiefs?
Evening. I'm Braxton Diddy. Tonight, I'm here in my capacity as the Assistant Director of Public Safety for the township, and we just wanted to take a moment. I'm here with two of the, the three fire chiefs that, that have primary jurisdiction in the, in the township. Chief Sanders from York Haven and Chief Hillis from Newberry Township. As many of you are aware, and some people actually sitting here tonight served, about three, a little over three years ago, the township began a venture with one goal in mind, and that goal was to increase fire protection and public safety in the township. And we had a lot of meetings, a lot of conversation, studies, consultants, we did a lot of stuff, and there was a lot of ideas. Through all of that, skip forward three years to today, we are implementing, very shortly, we've, we've actually already started to implement, but this will be full steam ahead in just a couple days, what I consider the biggest step forward in fire protection for our residents. And that is the paid driver operator program. We have employed nine part-time employees, all that are either current or, or former professional firefighters, to serve in a capacity as driver operators. Their main focus is to support all three of our fire departments that service the township with volunteers, to get the fire apparatus out the door with those volunteers, to come to our residents in their unfortunate time of, of need and an emergency. I consider this the, the, the single biggest step forward. Volunteerism is down locally, it is down in the Commonwealth, it is down nationwide, and we have to do something to help. So, what we've developed is a program where these drivers will work Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They will be primarily stationed at Newberry Township Fire Department, Station 31, but they will have responsibilities at the two other fire departments. However, Newberry is the busiest firehouse in the township, and it also serves the entire township with the only rescue truck. So, that's where they'll be primarily based, and in the rare occasion that one of the borough fire departments have a call, that Newberry Township is not dispatched onto with mutual aid, they will respond to that firehouse and, and assist them with their apparatus. They'll also be doing rig checks, making sure that all the, the equipment on the trucks and the trucks themselves are in service and ready for use. They're also going to be doing some PR stuff for us, going to the schools and doing fire prevention, all the, the things that the volunteers do now. But, again, I just want to give a, a big shout-out and kudos to the volunteers, the leadership of the fire departments. They stand beside me tonight, hopefully with proud smiles on their face. But, this is a long time coming, and it's going to be great for our fire departments and mostly, and most importantly, our residents. But, kudos to them and all the volunteers that were working behind the scenes on these committees, and also this board. This board has submitted tremendous support. I mean, they've given us tremendous support over the three years of trying to figure out this challenge that we have, Director Lutz and myself, and, and again, the team has been great. Specifically, the chairman and vice chairman have sat in on a lot of these meetings and listened to our needs, listened to our concerns, and the whole board entirely has been very responsive and positive and supporting in this venture. So, come Monday, we were going to do it April 1st, and we realized that was a Tuesday, so we said, why not Monday, and say we, we started it in, in March. So, you'll see these folks in the community, they have public safety shirts they'll be wearing, they'll be in uniform, they'll be supporting our fire departments and the other responsibilities that, that we give them. And again, it'll be Monday through Friday throughout the whole year. So, we're really excited about it. Thanks for everybody that volunteered your time, and we're going to continue to chug forward. We've done tremendous things with the fire departments, and we continue to do that on a monthly and daily basis. So, any questions I can answer for anyone relative to this program? All right, great, board, again.
I'd like to add in there that, talking to the fire chiefs, volunteerism, we have people signing up for shifts to work with the paid guys, where they're going to man fire stations during the day as volunteers, working with the paid guys. So, actually, for, as far as our fire service, that improves it tremendously, because now, instead of waiting for people to get to the firehouse and go out the door, we're going to have people in the firehouse, going out the door when they get the call. So, kudos to those guys for stepping up.
All of the, the part-time drivers, I think this is important to know, too, because the township doesn't own the fire departments. We support them, and that has been our mission from the beginning of this venture. And when we interviewed these candidates that applied for this part-time job, all of the candidates that we selected and subsequently hired were unanimously approved by all three fire chiefs or their representatives in the interview, as well as the director and myself. We thought that was really important. We, we are, we are having township employees go to these fire departments that we don't own and we don't run, but we support them. So, all of the leadership of the fire department was supportive of the folks that we hired, and we are seeing that now. Probably, my proudest moment of this whole program was one of the assistant chiefs at Newberry asking me if it's okay if some of their less experienced or junior members come and learn from these employees we have, to make them better volunteer firefighters. And that was very humbling for me, and I didn't really see that coming, but I think that's a great benefit that I personally didn't recognize until we got it off the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I ran into someone from Fairview Fire Department today, and they were, they were excited for us. He commented how much better this made their department, and to Dave's note, how much more participation we'll get having a driver. So, I want to thank you, chief, the fire chiefs, and Dave and Diane for all the work you've guys done on this for the past years.
Thank you. You guys have anything?
You have anything to say, Mark?
What you'd like to mention is, I'll just mention that, you know, these, the, the guys that are saying that, hey, we can hang out at the fire station are guys that probably aren't qualified to drive. So, now we have a crew that can run all day long. So, we don't have to worry about the guys that are at work, or, or whoever does work, so we have a crew. So, I, I think the safety part of the whole township has just risen to a new level.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, can I, your, about your assistant wall passing away the other day?
Thank you. Yeah, so, as Lieutenant Diddy said, the members at Station 31 are extremely excited about this program, this new venture that we are pursuing within the township. They can't actually wait for the drivers to start. I was just advised by some of my members that, I think we're going to have three or four with the first paid driver on Monday, so, which we are pretty excited for. So, again, I would like to thank Chief Lutz, Lieutenant Diddy, and the board of supervisors for making this project go forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I, I want to thank everyone as well. It's good to see the volunteerism increase, especially with the fire departments. I know you guys were struggling there for a while now. You seem to be coming together, working together. Volunteers are coming, they want to hang out there, be part of the community. It's good to see. I like driving by the fire department and seeing those guys standing outside. It's good to see again. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the engineers' report. Bill?
I have nothing to add to my report.
Scott, Highway Department? Jeremy, building and plant, zoning? Rob, you got anything for the supervisors' report?
No, I don't know.
Diane?
I do. May 4th, as everyone should know by now, we have a big event coming. We have probably 70 vendors coming to Newberry Common Shopping Center, which is huge. We have bands coming, there'll be music, we have, all of our volunteer fire departments are making food. We have a kids' village where they'll bounce balls, bring your kids for $5 all day, they can jump around, wear them out. What else, Cody? It's going to be a huge, but... And this is just the beginning, yeah, we have one planned for the fall as well. The second thing is, I got a note from Dammy Miller. She wants everyone to know that there is a Newberry Town Historical, historical, what is she saying? My glasses on, maybe I could read it.
There you go.
Over at the Nade Chip History Center in York Haven, a lot of Newberry Town historical items are on display. Should like for everybody to support it, it's April 9th through the, it's April 9th at 6:00. I'm sorry, I'm struggling with that, and that's all I have.
Aaron?
I don't have anything.
Claire?
I'm out.
Okay. I want to move on to the solicitor.
Nothing added to my report.
Okay. Jane, Treasurer? Excuse me. Brent, Sewer? And we have nothing from the manager. Okay, we're going to move on to old business. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Emergency Medical Service Agreement with Community Life Team, EMS.
I'll make that motion, we approve that agreement?
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to move on to new business. First on new business is approved Resolution 2025-12 to appoint Nevin Shank to the zoning hearing board.
I'm looking for a motion. Make that motion, we approve Nevin Shank to zoning.
I'm looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2025-13 to establish the Newberry Township Events Committee.
I'll make that motion, we approve Resolution 2025-13 for our Special Events Committee.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor?
Diane, do you want to explain a little bit about this?
The resolution? I don't have it in front of me.
Well, it's the events committee.
Oh, the events committee. The events committee, is that what you want to hear? Okay, okay, so the Special Events Committee is a group of about 12 of us, who are residents and/or taxpayers, who have come together to improve our relationships, improve our community togetherness, and figure out some events that will make that happen. We started with the Veterans Memorial, it was a huge success. After that, we did the Christmas event, and now we're working on the spring event, May 4th. So, again, there's 12 of us, we're going to be rotating people in and out as they, years of service expire, so stay tuned to that, that will be revolving. Any questions? Okay.
All in favor of the events committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next on the agenda is to approve... Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Can I, can I back you up to the old business? Sure. For a second, please? You have the Emergency Medical Services Agreement? Yes, sir, you go right ahead. Well, it's, it's your, your meeting.
We did approve it.
You got it? Yeah, we did do that. Okay. Okay? Thank you. Yes. Huh? Yeah, it was during his naptime.
Sorry.
We're good. It does get boring after a while, I understand. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve Matthew Kenny from Panone Associates as a part-time temporary, temporary, I repeat, zoning officer for the township.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, concerns?
I just think this will waste the money what we're doing with this, but it'll be a better way of doing this, don't you think?
But, we are working on that.
We're working on that better way.
So, is this going to be temporary for so many days, or?
I'm hoping that by the end of April, we're done with it. It was all in a, done in the fact in order to help Jeremy get caught up, because he says he's awful busy, so.
So, we're going to put that in the motion, in April, we re-vote on it again, or?
Yeah, we could do that. Is that what you want in the motion? Well, then make the motion.
I'll make the motion in May's meeting, we re-vote on this again? Not April, of course, April 30th, be paired with it.
Yeah, May.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sound good?
I'll second that.
Yep.
Okay. Pardon me? Yes, there is. Storm the zoning. Sure. Yeah. All, questions, other, any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Next, approved Resolution 2025-15, planning module for Falcons LLC. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Questions?
I'll abstain.
Phil, you have any information?
This is just for the on-lot sewer with regards to the Falcons plan, so.
Basically, the application had to be submitted for DEP because of him putting sewer in, and they had to do soil testing and everything else, and that's what the report is. It's ninety some pages if you want us to go in detail, but I think it's going to be pretty boring.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved Resolution 2025-16 for CP, C2P2 DCNR grant for the Terry Memorial, Terry Dolan Memorial Park. This has to do with, we'd like to do some more upgrades to that.
Bill, you want to talk about it? Thank you.
Yeah, do you want me to bring up the...
Yep.
Do you have a picture handy there, Bill?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, so, kind of to the right of the screen there, you can kind of see the improvements. We're adding parking spaces, a pickleball court, we're going to be redoing the surface to the basketball court and resetting the one basketball hoop. There's ADA parking, as well as ADA access to the basketball court, pickleball court, and the pavilion, as well as the new park equipment that will be going in next to the pavilion.
Adding a lot of ADA spots as well.
Any more questions? Do we have a second on it?
I don't think we had a motion.
I don't think we had a motion.
I need a motion to approve this Resolution 20...
I'll make a motion, we approve the DCNR grant for Terry Dolan Memorial Park.
Looking for a second? Questions or concerns? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, next, we're moving on to approving the multi-municipal line painting bids for 2025.
I'll make that motion.
I was going to say we're sending bids out. I'll second that.
Bill, do you have any... Bill, do you have any questions or comments on that?
No.
Okay. Basically, it's, I think, five, five different municipalities go together to put the bids out for line painting.
Well, let me clarify. The bids were done.
Bids were done?
It rotates.
Yeah, every year.
Between, it's Springinsbury Township, Newberry Township, Windsor, Lower Windsor, and Dover Township, and Manchester. Manchester ran the process this year. I think you've been part of this for probably going on 20-plus years. Bids were put out. Low bid was chosen, and now each municipality approves their own portion of the package. So that's what you're approving tonight, is the bids related to, is the bid related to your portion of what was put out by Manchester, and the low bidder was DE Gemel.
And the total bid amount's $35,372.
Your portion of it, yes. That's correct.
$35,372, our portion. Correct. And it's broken down by linear feet and pricing of a single line, double line, yellow lines, white lines. Same thing we did last year.
Do we get any help with that through the state and all? Or is that through our, the gas money and stuff that we get back? Is that what helps the base it is? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, can I make, just back up on one thing? Just, so attorney, so everything negative is not coming from the board. I just wanted to give you kudos for your part in that Dolan Park project.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, this is a resubmission. We didn't get it last time.
Yeah, but you were instrumental in the planning of it from the start, so.
It's your equipment.
Okay, that's all.
It's equipment and everything you picked out to help design that. Yeah, thank you. I'm not trying to be ignorant about it, I'm just saying.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask.
No, I said you, the one that researched and found the equipment that's ADA compliant and everything else. I said, I appreciate that. I wasn't trying to be ignorant by saying, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm getting older. Bedman.
All right, sorry, Dave, to interrupt.
No problem. Looking for a motion to approve the hiring of Jordan Kraus to fill the wastewater labor vacancy that we have at the sewer plant.
I'll make that motion to hire Jordan Kraus to fill the wastewater labor vacancy.
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we're going to discuss the Grandview Drive traffic study. Bill?
Yeah, so we completed the study. It does warrant restricting truck traffic. We were also asked to look at, I believe it was Conawago Ab-
Cragmore.
Cragmore Road, I'm sorry, which is a state road. So we sent the report for Grandview Drive and Cragmore into the state to review. And they're going to actually evaluate Cragmore as well. And once those, their recommendation comes back, we'd be looking to implement the restrictions.
And just so that you understand, we had complaints about our township, our neighboring township to the south, placed a lot of truck restrictions down there around their warehouses and stuff. And these guys are getting into these areas that are truck restricted, and they're coming back up, trying to find their way back. The GPSs are telling them to go on Grandview, and it's not near what it's supposed to be for that kind of traffic. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that study.
We approve it or we just discuss it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think this point we're just.
Okay, so, once we hear back from the state, then we'll be able to post signs. We can't, we can't as a municipality post any signs on the state road until the state gives us permission to do that.
Would you be limiting the traffic one, Cragmore two, as the crux?
No, that's Pendott, and that's them.
Yep, Pendott's got to do their own study on it because it's a state road. But our goal is to restrict them from turning onto Cragmore off of the old trail because that's where it's originating from.
That would be wonderful.
And even if we, we still have to wait for the state to approve us to put signs on their road. We just can't go pound signs in on their, on their right away.
Are there times limit on that, or is that Pendott's?
Pendott, normally Pendott, once they get their letter, they have to, they have to answer the original letter within 30 days. And they'll come out, do their study, and say, yep, it signs up. And that's normally like a 60-day process. It's, you know, that's a requirement. You know, when it lands on somebody's desk in the safety division, they have to immediately address it within 10 days, and they have 30 days to come up with a finding and 60 days to complete it. So. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2024 Volunteer Fire Service Credits for the Earned Income Tax totaling $4,318.85.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And that's part of our incentive program that we partnered and mimicked alongside of the York County, their tax relief stuff. And it's just a little extra bonus for our volunteers. So I have a motion, and I have a second. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Looking for a motion to approve the portable toilet bid for Walter Services. That is the portable toilets that we have in the parks.
I'll make that motion. We.
They were the low bidder, by the way.
Approve Walter's service.
Walters. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'm looking for a motion to approve the police, yeah, the CBA for the police, the bargaining unit.
I'll make that motion. We approve the CBA police contract.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Questions?
I have an issue with it. Not with the whole contract, but the way this procedure goes is two people meet with Jess and his crew to agree with contracts. In the past, what they did, you guys came to an agreement. Then a labor attorney came to the whole board and discussed the whole thing with us to explain everything to us. Then it went to Jane, and Jane explained to us the cost analysis on it. And so far, I have not talked to any labor attorney or Jane.
Okay.
I'm not far against it, think, but I think it should be.
Well, it was all done in emails, as far as I know. And I thought you looked at the email today.
Yeah, but it's no different when you have the labor attorney in front of you asking questions, and he brings up good points. And, you know, you two discussed it with Jess and them, and you got all the facts. But I feel like I'm just not in the loop with everything. You know what I mean?
Okay.
Well, we had several executive sessions where we discussed it.
Yeah, we never discussed it with the labor attorney. Labor attorney never came in and discussed everything with us.
Well, I can just say that we talked earlier. We got an email from the labor attorney outlining everything two days ago.
I just think it should be, the labor attorney should be, meet with us, all five of us, discuss everything, discuss it with Jane, the cost analysis, what it going to cost us, then make our decision. That's all.
Okay.
That's how we did in the past.
Okay. I have a motion.
John, I'm sure.
John Martin?
Martin? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Approve, oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion to table the fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to table the fee schedule.
You're just tabling it.
Just tabling? Okay, I don't have to motion that, all right. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to create an IPMC Appeals Board. Jeremy, you're up.
Hello, I'm Jeremy. I'm the codes enforcement officer, Newberry Township. I, we, when we adopted the UCC, we also adopted the IPMC along with it.
Could you explain what UCC and IP?
Uniform Construction Codes is UCC, and IPMC is International Property Maintenance Code. Now, we don't, we have a UCC Appeals Board, but as I was reading in the book of the IPMC, we don't have an appeals board for anybody to want to appeal a violation in the bill, or a property maintenance code. So I brought it to Mr. Patrick's. But, wait, I'm lost here. I brought it to his attention, and he said, write up a letter, and gave it to him, and he would make sure that the members would get it, and we would look into it. If we don't have the appeals board, there's no sense in having the IPMC. Just like the UCC. If you don't have an appeals board, there's no sense in having it. So if I'm going to do property maintenance and cite people in violations, we have to have an appeals board. That way, if they want to appeal it, they can appeal it to the board. Anything else?
No. I'm assuming that's just a volunteer board?
Yes.
So.
So we can do some work on that? I guess.
I'd like to motion to at least start the creation, to create the board. And then we can put it on the website, look for some volunteers for that board.
So it's not board members that do this?
No. No, this is, this is a board that can be comprised of citizens within the township, a member of the board of supervisors, or two. But, you know, it's an appeal so that you don't like to, Jeremy told you, you have to clean the yard up because you've got 17,000 trash bags in the yard, and you think that that's art. You have to bring that to that appeals board in order to get that done. So that's the easiest way to explain how this appeals board is and what it's for, so.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could plug in.
Yes, sir.
You recently joined the Capital Region UCC Intergovernmental Appeals Board.
Mm-hmm, we did.
York County, I believe, has a similar intergovernmental appeals board for the IPMC and the UCC. So I would suggest reaching out, Mr. UCC, or anybody on the board, to the York County.
Okay.
Folks, and see what the, what the process is to sign up there versus, I mean, look, people are stretched in with volunteer efforts and to try and wrangle people together within 20 days to get an appeals process going. Might be a difficult task. So just, I would, I would look at that as an option as well.
Okay, well, we can table this to next month till we get to look into these other boards that are available and see if that will work in our situation, so. All right?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make that motion. We pay the bills.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.